Were you down there yesterday?
I was. I was. I did my grocery shopping.
Well, then you didn't have to deal with me.
Fine, I know. It was so pleasant.
So peaceful.
Just kidding, Charlie. Just kidding. Yeah.
They were busy today.
Well, I want to tell you. I could tell you weren't there because the first cart I pulled out to take into the store to go in is all sticky on the handle. You would have been cleaning those carts up in the house.
And it wasn't white.
Sticky. I took it back and got another one. Now I had to clean my hands.
I told my supervisor, they don't care if she liked it or not. I said, "Will you come in?" And she said, "Well, these electric carts were supposed to be ready to go when we come."
Speak your mind, Charlie. You have the right. You've lived a long life.
They are. The one died. Well, they ain't set up for what they're to do. Where you selling them? You see them green.
See them green? See what green?
The light on the electric cart.
Oh. I rode one of those once. I had a... Been me. I'm going to share it.
Cow is on from seven thirty to one today, and I'll schedule tomorrow.
That's a lousy time, though.
Oh, it's beautiful in the morning. It's slow, but by ten o'clock it picks up.
Yeah, well, I was gonna die. I'm trying to think. It was... No, it was okay. It wasn't real empty, but...
Do you see the cookies? Or you avoid them?
What cookies?
I told you the stars are there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, there's... I avoid them, Charlie. I'm very far comfortable. I get it all the time. I work one summer... When I was in college.
We need to add something to where we want to make.
Okay.
You forgot about that.
Okay.
Anyway, I went to work outside.
There are switches for...
And I work in the bathroom.
It's gonna... It would save them money because they...
On the conveyor belt. And you're not eating as many as you want.
Or we need to put that on because he wants to get down.
It's gained weight.
Chocolate start twelve.
I had mentioned this to her. I thought I have to pass it.
Cool. I'll keep the heads out.
You don't gain weight. I'm done. I...
Exactly.
She can be one there.
So... What we have to meet tonight after meeting about?
I thought I could talk to you over there.
Well, that's what we're meeting about next Wednesday.
Oh, is that what? Yes, I... I was trying to fill out that thing. I didn't even do it. When you're available.
Well, Nate told him it was going to be at six o'clock Wednesday night.
Oh, yes. That's the one we told him you would be up getting... Oh, yeah, okay.
Uh, yeah.
Switches.
Well, we have to start tonight about it.
Which is for router data. Motion to pass. Switches for router data.
Kathy, I'm not there knocking on his door.
This is my day here.
Well, I didn't see you.
I'm waving and knocking.
Well, we weren't locked down. We came.
The first door was unlocked. The second door was unlocked.
You guys be on this side. You would come in when y'all want to know.
I think you're trying to tell me I should have just stayed home.
Well...
Have to do the reports.
You could have called somebody.
I was going to. Yeah.
I was going to, but then you let me in.
I was on the phone, so I would have seen your dad.
You're good. That's Ben's spot, I think, anyway, isn't it? No. Who's is it?
You gotta give my thoughts to it because I'd be like choosing tonight.
Oh, you're in the... Oh, you're in the report spot.
So I didn't talk to him.
Is Ben here?
Well, did you get my email that I was going to be?
No, that's what I mean. He's not here.
I hope somebody did. Pat, did you get my email? I emailed Pat and Chuck and you, Kathy.
I left Steve in the other night because he was locked out.
Yeah, I saw your email right before we started. Amy, is Ben's presentation posted on the board agenda from the other day? I want to... I'm sending my scrums in. I want to tell them they want to vote here.
You want them?
It's on the...
Yeah, that and the board admitter.
Good. Thank you.
Says board docs.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October twenty-second, two thousand twenty meeting of the Dover Area School Board. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Allman. Could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Breton here. Mr. Buck.
Here.
Mr. DeShaw.
Here.
Mr. Delauter. Mr. Eichert.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie.
Here.
Mr. Ralhauser.
Here.
Thank you. First up, we have a fund balance designation presentation with Mrs. Lepo.
Okay, this top portion here is just the general fund designation is in the first column there. You can see we ended the year with twenty million four hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-three for the general fund fund balance. And then the two capital reserves, the capital reserve fund and then the capital projects. And then if you scroll down, Amy, the first column there is basically where we started the year at nineteen million seven fifty-two, seven ninety-seven. And you'll see the breakdown there. That non-spendable, again, just for reminder, that is our balance with the LBT. So that is not cash we actually physically here at the district. That's the fund balance with the... with Lincoln Benefit Trust. And then down below are our commitments for the general fund, which include retirement, technology, medical cost and debt principal. And then the unassigned portion of four point one million. The middle column there basically deciphers how we ended the year. So we had... Our fund balance of the LBT did decrease by that hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven thirty-eight. So the new fund balance at LBT is the four point five million dollars reflected there. And then our surplus in the general fund was the eight hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four for a net change of the six hundred and ninety-three thousand one eighty-six. And if you remember, we did approve the transfer of the eight hundred and seventy-two nine twenty-four to the capital reserve fund on Tuesday night. So that was a transfer made over to capital reserve. And then for the nineteen-twenty designations, again, we have the LBT fund balance there reflecting that slight decrease that we experienced. And then the commitments, retirement, technology, medical and debt principal have not changed. And then the unassigned is the four point one. And I believe the policy states that we have to be with under eight percent, and I think we're right around six, six percent. So a portion of that debt principal may need to be used for our current debt payments for this year. So we do have planned to have two of those paid out of the capital reserve. So we may decide to use fund balance to just pay for one of those, to keep the money in capital reserve. Any questions?
How many fun bal... or holidays for Lincoln Benefits Trust are in the budget for this year?
So for this year, for two thousand twenty-one, we have two holidays budgeted. And we had two holidays in nineteen-twenty as well.
Jen, on the Lincoln Benefit Trust, now that doctors are starting to see more patients again, more of the routine types of, you know, activities are occurring in doctors' offices, are we starting to see the claims pick up again?
We have. July has... July... I've sold July claims. I haven't seen August yet, but they have picked up. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. Lepo? Okay, thank you. We have our first public comment period. Do we have anybody here for public comment tonight? Nobody. Nobody, okay. Board President's Communication, we did not have an executive session before tonight's meeting. We will have a brief executive session after tonight's meeting to discuss the superintendent's search. So if the board members could please plan to stay for a few minutes afterwards tonight. With that, we'll move right into our committee reports. And again, I remind you to please speak into your microphones, get them close to you, report out, so those that are watching online can hear you clearly. So first, we have our Comprehensive Planning Curriculum and Professional Development Committee. Mrs. Herman or Mrs. Maylie or one of you presenting tonight in Mr. Delauter's absence, or Dr. Maloney's presenting?
Yeah, I was not able to be there.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eichert. The first item we talked about this evening was the proposed twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar, which is on the agenda. And it's similar to calendars that we've had prior to the construction projects. And, you know, those calendars were based on surveys that were done with the staff. And there's a hundred and eighty student days, a hundred and ninety teacher days. Our first teacher day is August eighteenth. The first student day is slated for August twenty-fourth, and that's our kindergarten, sixth grade, ninth and twelfth grade. Then everyone else would return on the twenty-fifth. There are five three-hour early dismissals for the purpose of data analysis, and we really find those to be extremely beneficial with a professional development day whenever possible following that three-hour early dismissal. Our last student day is June the second, and all snow makeup days, if any, would be at the end of the school year on that calendar. We also discussed policies one oh five through one ten, all under the curriculum instruction section. And basically, these policies were very minor changes that were keeping us compliant with the Chapter Four regulations and all based on PSBA recommendations. And some of these policies, one oh seven, one oh eight, one oh nine, one ten, hadn't been revised since two thousand and three, so in need of some revision. We also looked at thirty-six curriculum documents for approval tonight. One was AP European History, and thirty-five of the documents were CTE courses. So Mr. Benton and his team did a great job of working on their curriculum. We still have a handful of high school electives and CTE courses to finish up. But then we will have all of the curriculum written and posted. What we have remaining is our related arts curriculum, physical education, health, music, art and library. And we have a plan to get that finished next year, but we might be able to start this year to get some of that completed. And once that's finished, and it's all posted on the website, if you've been to the curriculum documents page, so we're pretty pleased with that. And then Mrs. Guyer gave an update on special education, a few issues. She talked about the number of students that we have attending five days, that the majority of our special education students are attending five days. So, for example, we have two hundred and forty-five elementary students, and two hundred and five of them are attending five days a week. And the high school is a little less. We have a few more of those in full blended and cyber, but out of about two ninety-two, we have a hundred and ninety-six students attending five days of school. She talked about compensatory services. That's something that there is new PDE guidance out that for our special education students, we have to assess if they're able to recoup any skills that were lost due to the school closure. So through that assessment, right now, we're in the information gathering stages. And then through November, November through June, we'll have to develop any kind of action plan that may be needed to assist students in recouping any skills that may have been lost. So we're in the process of doing that. She also spoke to the COVID mitigation grant. We received thirty-eight thousand dollars in a grant that can be used for special education students. And most of that grant is going to support students in remote learning. And so, for example, the days that we're not in school and how we... whatever adaptations and materials that those students may need. So... And the last thing she spoke to is changes in practice, and she said very similar to what's happening in other classes, that we have extra dividers for small group instruction. We purchased additional materials so that students aren't sharing and just some of the changes to the work-based learning program. And then the last thing we talked about, we took a look at some of the data from our diagnostic assessment that we're using ExactPath. Because it... Right now, more than ever, and of course, we didn't know we were going to have the extended school closure, but what this is able to do for us, because the students take the diagnostic assessment and then it identifies skill deficits. So, for example, we looked at third grade reading. In third grade reading, there's thirty-two skills that the students need to master. And what it does is it sets that learning path for the student, but it only has them working on four skills at a time. So one student might be working on second grade skills, while another student might be working on fourth grade skills, depending on how they did in a particular... in that assessment. But it's individualized, so it's something that we're... As I look at the students as a whole, and it's early, yet you can see in the learning path and how they're mastering those skills. So we're anxious to see that second benchmark when we do that in January. And it also shows us the national percentile ranking, so we're able to see how our students ranked relative to a national ranking of students who were tested last spring. So we just, again, looked at some of those skills and skill deficits and how we can close the gap for some of our students who may have lost some instructional time. So that concludes our report.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Maloney? Okay, thank you. Next up is our facilities and safe and supportive schools. Mr. DeShaw, Mr. Emmig and Mr. Ralhauser.
Tonight, we had a couple items that we talked about. The first one was installation of playground gates at Weigels Town Elementary. The cost of that would be two thousand and eighty dollars. Those gates would go from the playground on Fox Run Road between the playground and the church. So the next item we had talked about was... Well, actually, Mr. Papa had talked about he needs switches for the router data system at Dover Elementary, plus the administration building. The cost of that would be thirty-two thousand seven ten oh nine. There is a item on here, a motion that... Because he would like to get that approved tonight by the board. And that... And what was on the D-ten list was thirty-four thousand six hundred. So we're saving a little over a thousand dollars on that. We need to have, I guess, the Mrs. Kroom and Jen and Mr. Nelson get together to come up with a budget for the D-ten list. Since nothing was spent this past year due to the construction, we would need something for the two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two school year. So Mr. Nelson had asked if we could have a... You could get the meeting together, come up with budget items for the upcoming budget to be put on. The last item was... This that came up was students cannot go from the high school to the middle school without a crossing individual. It seems we're having issues. That when the buses are, Mr. Dashog, if you want to bring up what you had talked about at that meeting.
Yes, I spoke to Dave. I've noticed that the high school, and this is going to come up. The high school needs to have a sidewalk put in from... Because what's happening is the students are coming up to where the students exit. And instead of walking down further to where the cross... Like to where the sidewalk extends, goes down the middle, what they're doing is they're cutting either into the retention pond. They're walking through there, or they're walking into oncoming traffic from the parents leaving, the students leaving, everything like that. Unfortunately, Dave said it's going to be very challenging to get that because you have to go through water conservation, all kinds of stuff. You'd have to amend a bunch of stuff. He said he would look into it. We also asked if there was a fence that's supposed to go around the retention pond. He doesn't know. He's going to look into it. What else was there? Oh, right now, I did mention to him that there are a lot of sports teams walking between the two buildings. And he said that in our permit to where we were able to get approved, those sports teams are supposed to be bused. There supposedly, there are no students allowed to walk between the two buildings. So we came up to where that we should ask Troy if he was aware of it and things like that. So a bunch of safety issues that need to be addressed, and unfortunately, the sidewalk could be challenging.
And of course, you had brought up the other item was when school buses are out and the students are dismissing, they get on the buses. Some of the students are running across Canal Road to get in their parents' car that are parked along Canal Road.
Yeah.
So that's another safety concern.
And when you're going to... One with the kids crossing the street, Mr. Perkins is also working with the township to see what can be done. I think you have to get PennDOT approval, but I think he's working on that. So we kind of have the process started, so I will double check with him and see where we are with that.
And there was only one other thing about the high school. We brought it up with Dom, that there have been a lot of students complaining that they can't get internet connection very well in the cafeteria. So he's going to look into that. And then he also... I brought it to his attention that just with my daughter's math class, they tried to go down to the courtyards, and there was no internet. But it turns out that Lowbar didn't have the lines ran yet, but he said that should be fixed now because that was about a month ago. But he's also going to look into that as well.
So are the... I'm just trying to think, like, last year, when the... When the high school was now what's the middle school. When those kids would leave to go over for sports practices at the old intermediate school, I mean, they were never bused. Those kids just walked across. They walked...
They were bused.
They were bused.
We had to... We had to bus them from the high school to the middle school, the... Or from the intermediate school to the high school. That was something the township made us do.
From the intermediate school to the high school?
Yes.
But the high school kids walking to the intermediate school were not.
Right, they walked. Right.
So why are we requiring the high school kids to be bused at this point to go back over to the middle school?
I think...
Dave said in the permit to actually get the building permit approval, the township said we couldn't have the kids walking across Canal Road.
Right, right, right.
I just don't know how we're going to enforce that. Because there's so many kids who don't just have sports practices, but they have other things that they say after school for. So if the bus leaves for practice, but they've got to stay behind to work on something or do something else, I mean, how are we going to regulate that for our students? That's... That's going to be very difficult.
Right.
Unfortunately, at that parent bus dismissal, there shouldn't be a kid crossing that road anyways. It's already backed up with the buses going from the middle school to the high school, back out, all of the parents, all of the students. It's actually quite dangerous right there.
Right. No, I'm not talking about it dismissal time. I mean, most of the sports practices don't start immediately after school. Some of them, you know, there's like some fifteen minutes, you know, lead by.
Today, I saw two sports teams cross the road.
Okay.
So they're definitely... Even Tuesday said that they're changing in the bathroom at the middle school, and they're walking over. So it is happening.
Right, but that's middle school to high school. Like, I get that more than high school to middle school.
Well, I see football players walking out through the retention pond and across the street. So I don't know. It's... There's a lot of kids walking. Let's put it that way. And it's... It is pretty dangerous right there.
I just wonder how we... How we regulate that with buses, or do we need, you know, crosswalks or, you know, people to watch the kids, the coaches to do it, or what might be a remedy for that?
Dave did say that there was a crosswalk or something coming, but he has no idea when or... I forget what he was saying about that at the very end.
And I think that the sports teams that are crossing Canal, there is people stopping traffic to let them cross.
There is a crossing guard there, but...
So...
Okay.
Was that a condition to give the millin' turn?
That's what he said. You'd have to talk to Dave.
Yep, it was.
There may be nothing if that was a condition there, that we would probably have to...
The condition at the time, though, had... Was specifically for intermediate to high school. And you're right, it was because those kids have practice right away after school. The issue will be kids have activities after school and then go down to practice at five, and we're not going to have a crossing guard there or a bus run at that time. So... But we'll look at it and see what we can do. Yeah.
Something else I wanted to bring up to... We kind of touched on this, the... In our... I brought it up at our fiscal to Tracy in our committee meeting at the end. But for your reference, there, when you're coming out of the student, the car rider line at that stop sign, it's all mud, and there's actual, like a backhoe there. I was concerned there were kids walking through that mud today. And, you know, in addition to the clean freak in me thinking about those muddy shoes coming home, I worried about the safety concerns of falling or even falling onto the... the safety concerns of falling or even falling onto the, the equipment that's there on the corner. It was like a backhoe or something. And then another thing that I was thinking of when Dennis was talking, I, I'm concerned also about the intersection of that, is that, what's the road perpendicular to intermediate drive that comes out? Is that Mayfield?
Mayfield.
Mayfield. And it was, I've had a lot of student drivers, it makes me nervous, because I turn left to go into the car rider line, and the buses start feeding out. And sometimes, there's a little lag between the buses and the students. I've seen at least two close calls where the one kid, I don't know how, he escaped getting T-boned by a bus. So that really concerns me, because it backs up really quickly there, and people get frustrated because they're just sitting there, waiting to, to go when the buses are feeding out. And I'm, I, there have been at least two student drivers that have given me heart attacks in the past two weeks, so just another thing to kind of bring to your attention.
Before we take the vote for the, the switches, we did review five policies tonight that we want to put on next month for board approval. And these are policies two one eight point two for terroristic threats, policy two one eight point one for weapons, policy two twenty-seven, which is a new draft from PSBA for controlled substances and paraphernalia, policy two twenty-six, which is a new draft from PSBA, is searches, and the last one is two eighteen, student discipline. Those we want to put on for next month for board approval. The committee went over, and everything's fine now.
Terry, I was curious, the, the gates that you had talked about, your first item there at Waggles Town Playground area, what, what's precipitating needing those gates?
Well, I came in late. Mr. DeSho, can you?
Yeah, they'll, they're getting installed in two to three weeks. They'll be installed. The reason they were talking about those gates is apparently they have little ones going out there, there's people alongside the road, and it was more for protection of our students from people parked on Fox Run Road and things like that. That's what I believe Bobby said.
Waggles Town has a number of special needs classes.
And that's what it was for, they're the ones who use Playground One, apparently.
Right, right.
The bigger kids are the one in the back.
So these gates are going to be open to the outside then?
They didn't really get into who they're open to. It was more so that it completely surrounds Playground One to keep the kids safe from going out into the street or people from the street coming in.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you.
And then Ms. Raifert, we have the motion then.
Yes, just one more question before we move to that. Was there any discussion as far as how things are proceeding with our punch list at the high school and the middle school with the construction?
That was not brought up at all.
Did not come up.
A lot with the policies and.
Okay.
The D-ten item wasn't even on there.
I was just curious how that was progressing.
We talked a lot about sidewalks.
It's moving along. It's big.
I knew it was a long list.
It's really, really big, yeah. Yeah, both buildings are very large, yeah.
All right. Okay, as Mr. Emig mentioned, we do have a motion to discuss tonight, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to add these switches for the router data system on the D-ten list at a cost of thirty-two thousand, seven, ten, and nine cents.
Go move.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Questions or discussion?
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, I got a comment. I know when they were getting approval for the high school, this crossing Canal Road was a big issue, because I was at two of the meetings when they really pushed about how we're going to control these kids from crossing the road. So that's something we're going to have to work on. Another comment on the sidewalk is, I know how particular they are with runoff water, and I know people putting driveways in now have to put stones alongside their driveways to catch the runoff water. I don't know if we could make a stone sidewalk work or not, which would let the water flow in the ground or wherever it wants to go, and would be a more economical way than having to go through all the regulations now to put concrete down. That's just thought.
Good idea, Mr. Ralhauser. Could we get that to Mr. Nelson to consider and discuss? All right.
The only issue with that would be was, what about snow? You can't really plow gravel for them to walk, so you're just causing another problem. I like it, it's, but the snow removal of that sidewalk would be tough.
Form, look for that to come to us in November to vote, to finalize that for a vote. We're also going to have several other things coming up in November to approve. We'll have an annual financial report, fund balance. Things will all be coming up on our agenda for, for November to approve. Our next item we talked about was our. So as, as I just mentioned there, we will be having a resolution coming before us next month, basically stating that we're not intending to do that. We also talked a little bit about how things are looking when it comes to tax collection. As you know, last month was the rebate timeframe for property taxes, and Jen reported tonight that it looks like our collection rate is on track, with a lot of concerns that we had about COVID and people losing their employment, and the unemployment rate might impact people's ability to pay their property taxes. It doesn't look at this point like it has significantly affected that. We're still looking at about a ninety-five percent collection rate. Time will tell whether those that normally pay in November. But at this point, looks pretty good. We also talked a little bit about our property values. Our property values pretty much continue to go up, and since the last time, we had an increase once again in property values of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred, is that the number? Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I got that confused. It went up, the, the, the tax implications from it is an extra fifty-seven thousand dollars, and the one hundred and twenty-three thousand is our average homeowner property in Dover. So I apologize, I got that, I saw you jumping in. So when we talked, we talked about the tax collector compensation, that contract is coming up for approval in January with a recommendation that will be coming to us next month. We are currently in a four-year contract, and that will be needing to be renewed come January, but we'll have a, a presentation to us coming up next month. The next item on our agenda was, EMB has approached the district here, as you recall, EMB, the last time we renewed their contract, we put that contract out for bid. All the indications from everyone that, that was present in the meeting indicated they have been nothing short of wonderful to work with through this whole situation, through the summer school lunch program, and, you know, through everything that, that they've done, they have really stepped up and helped us out. With that in mind, they've approached the district and asked if we would consider extending their contract. The thought probably. To know that they have a district that they're going to be able to operate in for a long period of time, it helps with recruitment. These and long-term stability. So they have approached us and asked if we would consider extending their contract. SDA waiver that we spoke about a few months ago has been extended through June, so basically through the end of the school year, all students are eating for free. So that's a, that's a huge benefit to our students and families to be able to know that they can buy, or they can purchase a lunch free, basically be given a lunch for free. So we want to make sure that we're utilizing that as much as we can. The reimbursement from that is considerable, and it actually is quite a benefit for, for the district to offer that. So we're, we're pleased to report then that every, every student will be eating for free for basically the rest of the year. Did I miss anything? Amy, Jen?
I think the only thing that I would, wanted to, to add with the EMB, it was no. One bid that was put out, so that was something else that, you know, we, they, we feel that it's going to be difficult. Logistically, for these kinds of companies to come into a new service territory and expand out is cumbersome. So just, just wanted to, to bring that up if, you know, there's any question.
You actually only have four school buses in York County right now. You have Reliance, EMB, FNS, and of course, you have Durham. And of course, I, if we, if you went with any of them other ones, I would say no, because I've dealt with some of them. So I think the best recommendation is to keep EMB.
Yeah. And then, and it was also mentioned in committee that the retention rate of employees, even through the shutdown and, that we experienced at the end of the year was extremely high, much higher than most of the other school bus companies. So. Maybe that's not something we typically do, is extend contracts, but in this case, it might very well make sense. So more information to come on that, once the details get worked out. Anything else? Nate, Jen?
Covered it.
Okay.
Questions out from anybody?
You brought up a free, the free lunch program. Do you happen to know what our lunch debt is for student lunch debt that hasn't been paid or anything?
We just actually met about it this week, and I don't, I don't have, that we didn't kind of get into those numbers. It is a very odd year, you know, to be asking people to pay debt, but one of the things we're going to do is we have some local churches who desperately want to help us pay down their debt, so we are meeting again in a month, and we're putting together a process on how we decide who has their lunch debt paid down. So we want to do that first. And then we are going to. Because we're not going to accrue any debt, which is great. So, but I don't have that exact number, but I can have that for next month.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our miscellaneous period for any other comments or observations from our board members tonight. Anybody have anything?
Yes, I just want to say, Tracy, you had, on Tuesday night, brought up about contacting the Washington Township families. So for, for any of the families that are listening, that, you know, those emails did go out, you will also receive a paper copy in the mail. I understand that some people were having difficulty getting their, their emails. Mine went to spam, some people haven't received them. I'm not exactly sure why. I know Brad has been looking into it. The survey should be fixed now, so that if you have multiple children, you should be able to fill it out. I ran into that problem, I could only do one until it was fixed. And that. So just to reassure the Washington Township families out there that.
They will be here.
You won't be left behind if you didn't get the email.
No.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to our last public comment period. Mrs. Herman, did you see anybody sneak in the door over there? Okay. So with that, our future meetings, our next board meeting will be Tuesday, November seventeenth at seven o'clock PM. Again, we will stream it like tonight's meeting, then our committees will be Thursday, November nineteenth at six via Zoom, and our planning meeting will be Thursday, the nineteenth at seven PM via live stream. So if there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aho.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.
If you see Christina.